All right, Board of Trustees, call to order and welcome by myself. Barb?
Finance Committee, call to order and welcome by myself.
Number three, roll call by Recording Secretary. Board of Trustees.
Ermily?
Here.
Feeney?
Here.
Maloney?
Here.
Maynell? Not here, White?
White? Isn't he on Zoom?
Yes. He was here earlier, so.
Are you there, Lauren? Guess not.
Okay.
Are we gonna? Yeah, are we gonna try to get ahold of him?
He is on.
He is. Lauren, you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, wow, loud and clear.
Okay, John?
Here.
Ziegler?
Here.
All right. And then, I'll just do finance.
Yep.
Bender?
Here.
Ermily?
Here.
Maynell? Simmons?
Here.
Sukka?
Here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I never know who should do it.
Let's see, that is together, so together will approval of the minutes from previous joint meeting of the Village Board and the Finance Committee, September 21st, 2020. Move to approve. We have a motion by Feeney.
Second.
Second by Ziegler. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, so carry.
Okay, Finance Committee?
So move to approve.
Bender?
Second.
Simmons? On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry.
Number five, approval of minutes from previous meeting of the Village Board, September 21st.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Zon, second by Feeney. On the question, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Opposed, so carry. Number six, public comments. Any public comments from the audience or somebody on social media or Zoom? Any public comments from the audience or social media? Hearing none, we'll move on to seven. Let's see, that's you.
Okay, is that me or you? I think that's probably me.
Yeah, that's you.
Okay, final, 2019 audit financial statements along with letters.
We milked out the financial statements and I plugged it with the letters. Are there any questions?
The letters were good, there was no, you know, conflicts or, you know.
No, the rest of, everything was resolved this year except for the leases which the new budget is not to be implemented yet. It was pushed off a couple of years, so there's like still not resolved. And this year and next year we'll be giving them. It's just a different way of recording our leases.
Okay, could I have a motion to acknowledge?
Move to acknowledge.
Listen. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry.
Do you think the board takes up the financials also?
Okay, move to approve. Motion by Feeney.
Second.
Second by Ziegler. On the question, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry.
Okay, policy issues, discussion communications. Discussion and possible action for staff to work with the village is current.
Where is the number eight?
I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay. Yep, that's right.
I didn't even have it marked off and I went right past it. Review and discussion of 2021 budget.
So, we created a little PowerPoint. Today we're only discussing the general fund budget again. All the details in your packet, so if you have any specific questions, let me know. Otherwise, we're just gonna take a break over here with the PowerPoint presentation. Where are we now? So this is our 2020 estimate. We're looking at having a budget surplus of $255,000 in 2017. The revenue is $37,140, with expenditures of $218,777. Why? Rust recovery. We have additional expenditures that we can claim in a grant and get refunds for. Right now, we have about $34,000 that we got so far today. That's for our general operations. We also had a grant for, it's about $10,000, and that's for elections specifically. And while we are spending these funds on these additional costs, we weren't spending funds elsewhere, so that is why the additional expenses. Another area that we have additional funds coming are the intergovernmental services for inspections. Inspections are hard to budget. We don't know how much work you guys are gonna do with the current water. In addition to that, we're not sure how much revenue do you really wanna budget coming from current water. As you all know, we have two inspectors, and if we lose current water, we're not getting rid of the additional inspector. So we continue to have two. So this extra revenue that's coming in, we don't have to count on that to supplement those expenses, because we're gonna have them anyway. So budgeting mode coming in higher is just an extra little cushion that we have going forward. We also have more mobile expenses to budget. Just the way that last year was off a little bit, so we budgeted low again. And so this year, we have a little bit extra. So 2020 isn't on here. These are the expenditures and surplus amounts. We've got about $49,000 surplus in the wages. More public works time was allocated to utilities and forever not replaced with left at the beginning of the year. Health insurance with the wages gone and other funds and rent not being replaced. We had an additional $25,000 saved in health insurance. Income continuation. So this is a, it's a benefit for the employees. The state mandates that the municipalities contribute to this income continuation. So if you're gone for 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, the state has this program that you'll be able to be reimbursed where that's timely at a certain percentage of your wages. In the past, the state has charged the municipalities for this program, but they developed such a surplus that they have not charged at least for the last five, six years. We're not sure when that's gonna end. So we budget it every year. This year, it was $8,130 in savings. Training. Because of COVID, a lot of our training was canceled this year, so we had $7,000 surplus. Irrigation, we did not run a lot of our irrigation systems throughout the village. There's an estimated $10,000 savings. Stand, salt, surface maintenance, well, $12,000. Repairs, maintenance, this is mostly in DPW with vehicles, buildings, and other machinery, about $16,000. Outside contracted services, this includes the warming house, building inspections, and computer fees. We have about $16,000 surplus. Equipment rental, we always put that in there because we never know what kind of emergency is gonna pop up that we need to run some equipments, about $4,800 this year. Outside currently, we did one newsletter this year, which was a savings of $8,000. Normally, we do a quarter.
Each or all year? The savings, not each?
No, this is a total savings.
Okay, all right.
One of the reasons why you didn't see the full cost of the newsletter savings is because this outside is creeping to the electoral election. This is creeping through the village general fund as well. But the highest savings was pointed out in the newsletter. Membership training, a lot of our training got canceled and we didn't necessarily belong to all the memberships we needed to this year, because there wasn't training for that. That was about $6,900 savings. Lodging, heating, expense of travels, same thing, $14,000 savings. Parts, public work supplies, $23,000. More effort was put into utilities this year, as reflected in wages, that also overflows to the supplies needed for the street projects. That was what I do instead doing those projects and needing supplies. Instead of the utilities, the utilities were supplies for the projects that were done. Supplies, other, $8,000. $2,000 of that date was for tax write-off, which we still reuse. And then, another $3,000 in parts, supplies that were not purchased. Insurance, with $8,400 savings, capital, $64. And then, we had items on our budget, about $11,000, sorry, items on our budget. And that gives us to a total surplus of $218,000 for our expenditures. Any comments or questions on our surplus analysis? Where are we going? Right now, this is our budget. We have a proposed increase of 2.4%. Yeah, property taxes of $144,000 increase, intergovernmental revenues of 45, license permits are going down, times and board pictures down, dislading is down, and then, well, I found out, $60,000. There are many things to point out. As we added $60,000 of applied budget surplus. When I show you the over $200,000 surplus from 2020, we're looking at applying 60 of that for 2021 budget. $45,000 just added for the expenditure restraint program. The balance of the $99,000 payment that we'll be receiving next year was to be put in the SCAP money. As a result, those two revenues, new revenues that we're not talking about in our previous meeting, we lowered our lending increase to $144,000 with an estimated rate of 14% increase for operations only. This is not including that service. Our next meeting on October 19th, we'll give a whole picture of what's at still going, like the results, president's call right now. For operations, we're looking at raising, increasing our rate by 14 cents. Any questions? As you can see here, the total available for expenditure increase is $186,021.
So Jessica, that includes the increase that we're gonna realize was safer, reflecting up there only the amount that's here to go down, go down much?
This includes, well, safer is part of our.
Right, so just to make sure that that number includes the increase of growth.
Yep.
By, for safer.
Yep.
So Jess, you done?
Go ahead.
Okay. So you've, have you gotten the increase or what you're going to be doing for health insurance at this point?
So, at this point, we have, health insurance unchanged. We talked to our insurance broker, and there's a 5% reduction plan, so a plan that the villagers have and see about a 5% reduction. We're looking at going with that plan. Or something similar where health insurance would not be increased. But something that we're looking at rate on the 19th. We did not have all the answers from our insurance broker, because we're supposed to get that bid out so other companies could get our health insurance, and she did not have all the information back there.
That information's due back Wednesday, as I understand, as we understand it, we were doing more in-depth, I think, options yet. Pretty happy though that the one, at least the word of the conversation.
Okay.
Up on the screen, you'll see the 2021 budget expenditures. That's like a quick little reveal. Total decrease of $186,021. So where did the change come from? Here's our assumptions. We replace Brad. So we have a person in there replacing Brad on 50%. It's gonna be in the general fund. The other 50%, 50% is gonna be in the utilities. So you're only gonna see a half, half a person in here. Very similar to last year, because Brad was in the general fund, but he is also in the quadic center. So there's not much of change there. So the health insurance is unchanged. We have a 2% wage increase for everyone. Newsletter down to one issue. Increases to Everest Metro Public Safety is to be taken out contingency. As you can see, I have a $22,000 increase over last year for contingency. After talking with the judge and the place chief, we feel that there's enough in contingency to make our plan work. So what we did is bottom number right here, 2.4%, $186,000. That's our best estimate of what we need to get to, to get the expenditure restraint monies next year. So that was our target. Well, how much can we increase it to get the same brand for next year? $100,000 is a lot of money still looms if we can't get that. So that's our goal. There's an explanation of major changes. The $9,611 is the board salary increase. That accounts for four board members, because the other three will not get it until the next election. There's a decrease in the clerk's budget, that's mainly for elections. At $114,000, that's a 13.2% increase, that was the approved state budget. We have increases in street maintenance of $50,000, major maintenance 20, and street lighting of eight, that this, some items going down. Total public works budget is going up, $68,000. Number five, you can see decreases $26,000 in parts and park preparations. That's taking the, in the past, we had street guys from back working for parks. These days, they haven't been doing that so much, so we actually took their time out of parks. And that's why you see the decreases here. So it's just moving, moving people around into the correct categories where they're actually wanting.
So in that particular case, you're taking it out of parks and putting it in public works? Is what it amounts to, correct?
Yeah. And in utilities.
And recycling.
Number six, we have, normally that department doesn't see such large increase, but we have a new employee with family health insurance, and the old employee just had stable. So you're gonna see a large increase for that. And number seven, we just made sure we took the max amount of expenditures along with our expenditure restraint. Because each year it's building, space building, so you want the max that you can get. So once you take the expenditure restraint percentage, you get the max increase that you can have. And that is a summary of our 2021 budget increases. Any questions?
Everybody kept.
I have a question, Jessica.
Yep.
Go ahead, Lauren.
Okay, can I go ahead?
Yes.
I see that the administrators, only $74,000. You know, I looked through the budget proposal. I mean, that would be a horrendous cut to pay if it's only getting $74,000.
But that comes from other. It's, it's under funds, yeah.
Okay, but, well, that's what I thought, because I thought, wow.
It was nice of Keith to volunteer that.
Yeah, because he's getting a decrease in 2021.
Yeah, he took a hit in 20 and 21.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess I wanna just make a comment, so that it doesn't come out of the blue. At some point, I will, would like to have the raise that was proposed for the board to be taken out of the budget. I will not vote for it. After thinking about it for a long while, I, my first response was no. And then I, I guess it's not that the board doesn't deserve it, but I just think the timing is terrible. We're gonna be going with, for the building and everything, and I just, I just, I struggle with that.
Now, there are questions on the one. So what does the future look like? So by using $50,000 of applied budget surplus and $45,000 of the expenditure restraint, we have $160,000 of our debt service exemption left to use in the 2022 budget slash 21 levy. That means as of right now, assuming a 1% net new construction, we have $139,000 more money available for an expenditure increase. This year, we, our expenditure increase was on $186. So right now, knowing that, we're gonna start thinking, okay, where's the $60,000 coming from? And this doesn't take any consideration, any reductions in the state. There's a ton of talk out there. The state having a hard year, their next budget, Evers is 2% it in February, his budget, we'll have to see, I suppose, Senate help, but let's, all right. There's a lot of talk of reductions in our state. We'll see if we do. We're not too much. But as of right now, it looks, it's okay. Another word of caution, those estimates for the Everest Metro Police Department, please give us some numbers, but we know that those numbers are, we'll call not the true numbers. Their salaries and wages would have eighty-some thousand dollars. We're not gonna see that this year, because they had another line item in their budget that went down this year. So that kind of stacked up and absorbed that increase, so we're not gonna see it this year. Normally, the increases from Everest Metro are larger. But this year, the amount that we have in contingency is probably gonna be able to absorb it. But moving forward, especially next year, unless something else happens similar, there is gonna be a larger increase to our special. Anyone?
Yeah. So I put this together based on the 2020 general fund budget, and just kind of broke it out by category, so you can see where our budget is. So personnel is obviously your people, your benefits, those things. The contractual services in there is your street maintenance, utilities, salting, sanding, software, repairs are the big ones in there. Anything that we're getting provided by someone outside of here is in that line. And then, your supplies and other expenses, your biggest one in there is just your repair and maintenance supplies. And then, you will, it's your next largest. Then your other fixed fees is Everest Metro, Safer, our liability insurance, and the court. And then, capital is just computer hardware and software, some of those capital costs. And then the transfers is, the big one is refuse and recycling, which, correct me if I'm wrong, is for the yard waste site?
Landfill.
Landfill, ah.
So we moved the landfill from the general fund, so financed by General Levy. The agreement was that our fees charged to residents would be used to pay for the landfill cost. So that's why every year, we transferred them out from the general fund, so General Levy taxes, to recycling to pay for that cost.
Yes. So that's just kind of a breakdown. And then, the next one, so this is by category, which gives an interesting picture. I have the other category highlighted. If we were to keep everything the same as far as level of service, you really only have 9.4% of the budget to look at, which ends up being $731,000. The rest of it is just, let's see, like, non-discretionary. I have utilities, salting, sanding, street maintenance, fuel and oil, our assessor, our auditing fees, and regulatory fees. And then the fixed fees is the same as before. That's EMPD, Safer, the insurance, and the court. So you really can't, I mean, those are charges we're going to have. There's not a ton of wiggle room in there unless you drastically change your level of service, and same with your personnel and your transfers. So it just gives an interesting picture of where expenses are and what kind of wiggle room we actually have to look at when, this year, obviously, we're okay. But when it comes down to it, and if we're looking for the funds, there's not a ton of places to look if you want to keep everything the same. And then, this is just one I threw in there. We keep getting lucky, and ending up better than we think we're going to end up. But at some point, we're going to have revenue issues and going to need to make difficult decisions. So just things to consider in the back of your mind, at some point, it's gonna end up where we need to go out for a referendum to help pay for our streets or public safety. Or questions on what the preferred level of service is? Do we wanna provide a lower level, just to save that way, rather than increasing taxes? Or are there other revenue sources we can look at? No. Jessica, if you have anything to add?
Well, I guess, do you remember last year, probably the year before, when we began to use capital for some of the things that we may have used for traditional street maintenance, like asphalt overways and some other major maintenance items, so we had to transfer capital. I know as other community that they're probably borrowing all their money for street maintenance and being at back in the same year, and it's under the loophole of debt service exemption, while it's borrowed in the same year, be back in the same year, and still call them the, of course, the debt service exemption, but it still was a, it's still a cost. I guess, we talked a lot about that, that our, you know, our streets have been deteriorating, and that people expect to have good streets, good infrastructure, but that is one, perhaps trick, if you will, but put, you know, to freeze it one way anyway. And again, I am, we've talked about, we're, you know, it's our basic levels of service. I guess, I, certainly there's things we can give a look at, if that's what you want us to do. But I guess this rap kind of points out, there's, there's not a lot of discretionary areas. So, and then losing revenue from the state, that's always just the unknown, I know, that they're trying to, they're buying a budget. And there is a lag in how the whole situation this year has impacted revenues that we would normally receive from the state, that's quite likely asphaltous. You know, sales taxes are down, and other, other things like that. So we may see some delay, the impacts of that, and our operation, certainly won't feel immediate, because our tax burden is what it is. So.
I guess, with us being, or with municipalities not really being able to set our own tax rate, with the state continuing to balance their budget and by breaking the backs of municipalities, what would, I mean, I'm just, and Jenna, I haven't asked you this before, but if Weston were to combine and merge with a few other municipalities to become one larger community, do you think that that would ultimately save taxpayers' money?
I should, depends on state to look at it, too. I mean, like, for example, Bridge to Rockdale, they get sort of the corporate money, which we used to get 2026 or 2027 as Peter. We will be losing all of ours right now. We've got $23,000 of that. It'll be going on, he said, to Rockdale in a few years. And these state revenues are big for everyone. How does the state look at it, and the huge communities? It's a good question. I'm not sure if the answer was.
I guess, just with doing so much with our surrounding communities, to me, it just makes the most sense. There's too much, or there's a lot of duplication of services that we could just bring all together, or even share staff costs with our neighbors.
Well, a lot of it, you have to see, the, the street card. A lot of it, yeah, to say, the street guy who plods your road can only plow a hundred miles a street. You're still gonna need another street guy to plow the same, a different hundred miles of street than somebody else. So positions like that, no, I don't think those are, you can only say plodding like that. One of the things that I'm not gonna, I like is we do hire temporary people for first street calling, which is something that we can eventually look at too. I mean, when we're getting down to where we're looking at the level of service, I mean, what options do we have? We're gonna be exploring all options.
Thank you. It's, it doesn't seem like we have much option for the way of increasing and we don't really have much cuts of that, so we have to cut muscle.
It's on the level of service.
Right.
And catalytic versus workups, what can we offer? What does our community want? That's the big question. Would we put a referendum up there? Are they gonna say, yes, I want to continue servicing servicing? I'm not sure. It's up to them. When we move forward and we're only gonna have increases really for our debt, they're gonna see that impact on their levy, but are they gonna see it in their service level? That's what we're gonna have to see. And when they do see a service level change, are they gonna say, we are willing to pay more for all of those that we are getting?
And referendums can only be for public safety, right?
I'm not an expert.
No.
Okay, no, that's not true. Okay.
You need to, you need to uphold a referendum for any increase of the general fund operating levy.
Okay.
Whether that's for public safety or public works or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Referendums can be, be used, but in theory, we had, well, a number of years ago, we had the referendum for the additional in the safety area as far as additional that, and that passed, and then that was a continuation type of, of a referendum, if I remember correctly.
So I had the referendum that made Weston a full-time fire. That was before I was here in oh-seven. And then we did have a subsequent referendum, I thought, that did not pass.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Lauren.
Well, it may be too simple a thing to figure out because not all municipalities have the same level of service, but I believe there's a source where you can get municipality tax rates. And that'd be a good comparison is what is their tax rate? And where we are in comparison to other communities. I can tell you that Wausau's tax rate is way higher than ours. And we merged with Wausau, heaven forbid. Our tax rate, we go up, city Wausau's we go down. And same thing with surrounding communities. You gotta take a look at what kind of service do they have? Law enforcement services, do they have fire EMS services of all kinds? Those kinds of things before you try to compare apples to oranges.
Right, very true. I wasn't trying to make a dark comparison. I'm just trying to maybe think outside the box and get some big picture. But yeah, Lauren, you're absolutely right.
We, we could not merge, but share services. And, and that would be a nice test first. I mean, share a street sweeper, you know, put somebody on third shift, make it go around the clock. And you're gonna put the same one hours on it, just whether it's sooner or later. But if everybody has to have a street sweeper and yet we only need one for all three communities or two communities, maybe that's how we start, you know? And I think a lot of the talks that we're doing right now over this past year is, is very helpful. I think there's a lot of talks and a lot of staff talks between the different neighbors. And I think that's, that's how we do something long-term. And short-term, it's, it's very difficult to do something like that, so, but it's a good talk. What are we voting on the budget?
Well, good question. So on October nineteenth, we plan on presenting the full budget to you guys with a good estimate on the tax rate. From that meeting, if we want, we could have another meeting on the twenty-sixth that I told her and then publish it on the second, or else we could have a meeting on the second. The first meeting Monday in November, we could also have a meeting. And then we would have to delay our publishing next week. It depends when you want to adopt, whether it's the week of Thanksgiving or the week before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
And how comfortable you feel on the next week.
Okay. So let's say we move forward with our new building and we, we borrow. When, when does that take an effect, next year or the year after?
Depending on borrow.
Okay. So if we plan on building next year?
We'd be borrow.
Next year?
Yeah.
Okay. What effect, what effect will that tax rate change next year, right?
So I looked at Greg's projections, which is something I did when I looked at his schedule for the tax rate increases. And it really didn't go up much more than twenty-sixths.
So it's twenty cents, okay.
He was going up in twenty cents, I mean, twenty cents, three-year far.
And the highest, I think, is twenty-six cents. And then, then after that, it levels, after that fifth year is like twenty-six and starts leveling down. What I'm trying to get at, and I don't mean to make this real long, but I'm, I'm just, I'm taking a pause right now with your comments, Barb, on not voting for the budget if we don't pull off the salary increase for the board. And I, I look at that and I'm thinking, when, when is it okay then? And I, I'm running next year. I think you are, I think Nate is, and John is. I'm running and I'm confident that I can explain that increase, being that it's twenty-six or twenty-four years old, at a one point seven or a one point four, respectively. And I, I think it's right. I think it's right in what this village is doing and what the work that involves for this village. And otherwise, I would have never brought it up. And I, I feel like, now you'd be the second one, both of you are running next year. Would it be okay to put it on the budget for twenty-two when trustee Yi, trustee Minell, and trustee White is running? I'm, I'm not trying to be a stinker here, but I'm, when is it right? It's been twenty-six years with no increase.
It's never, there's never a good time.
There, there you go. So it wouldn't have been right five years ago, ten years ago, or next year or five years from now. Just like some of the people I'm talking to about this municipal hall, you know, we're replacing something we have. That, that's how they view it. There's a few people that have said that to me. Yet this is fifty, fifty-five, you know, going on sixty years old, you know, I think might be even longer. It's definitely outlived itself and we need to put in probably two million dollars just to make it correct, all the different things that have to happen. So if we don't build, it's gonna cost us a million, five to two million just to fix everything. So you can throw that million, five, two million into the new build and we'll have something here to sell. And I, I'm not trying to minimize that increase, but I, I'm not gonna feel bad about changing the wage for this trustee and president group, no matter who holds the seat. And, and I'm not gonna feel bad next year if I don't get elected because of it. I'm not. I think it's the right thing to do and I think anyone serving in these positions deserves it. So I need, I needed to just, I, I had to take a breath after you said that and I wanted to think about how I wanted to respond. But I think it's important. And, you know, when, when we're looking at the optics of, of the things we do, I don't think that's a bad optic. I really don't. And I think people, the work that's put into this, I put in a tremendous amount of work and I'm sure you all do. But twenty-six years speaks for itself, so I'm done talking about that. So, so we're thinking before, right, right before or after Thanksgiving?
Yes.
Right, okay, okay.
Would it be better to actually be before so that you could get things to the county?
It really doesn't matter.
Doesn't, okay.
We're at that point, if we feel comfortable after our next meeting, that we're gonna move forward and everything else is set, I think we should try to adopt somewhere. Because that way, yes, the county does get it and then people, when they call us, yes, we can tell you your taxes.
Right, because I know they get pretty excited about.
I agree.
Yes, people like to.
I agree. I think this would have been better too. Okay. I think we're still in finance, right?
Yeah. Okay, are, are you finished or you?
Yes, I am finished with the budget, honestly, there's more questions.
Is any other questions, Jessica? Okay.
Also, give me a chance, if you review it and have a question later, yeah, just give me a call and we can talk about it.
Okay, now I can go to policy issues, discussion, recommendations. Discussion and possible action for staff to work with the village's current auditor to complete a progress, progress audit for TIF District One and TIF District Two.
Well, I can mention this last time, I was just looking to get approval to work with our current auditor to get the tip audits complete. It's totally a TIF expense, so forty-eight hundred out of each tip.
Okay, finance, do you want to make a recommendation for the board or?
I recommend that the staff have the audit at this time.
Okay, motion by Bender.
A second.
Second by Suko. On the question? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Can we get the board to approve it also?
Sure.
Barbara, I have a question and last motion.
Yeah?
Are the funds coming from TIF or are they coming from the general fund?
They come from TIF.
TIF.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
You know, I, I actually went ahead on the agenda to see if we're, that's why we're approving as we go. So I just didn't see it on the board's agenda, so thank you. Number nine also for the Board of Trustees, action for the village's current auditor to complete a progress audit for the TIF District One and TIF District Two.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ziegler.
Second.
Second by Minell. On the discussion?
Question.
I just have a, he had his hand up?
Sir.
Sorry, sorry.
Sure, the only question I had was, I was wondering if this was sent up for a request or proposal on quotes or was this?
I did not. We have one out for the new audit. Currently, our current auditor is, was the chief as when we did it. But it was in the contract, our current auditor. So we do have new coming out for years twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-two. But no, this was not. It was, it was originally, I guess, when we sent out the RFP for the original three-year contract, it was.
Okay, the only reason why I was asking was, you know, obviously price, you know, I just like to make sure that we're able to get the best deal for our constituents as well here. So, and that's just my comments.
Okay, trustee Feen?
What, I guess, my question is, what's the, what's the purpose in having one if we don't need one for twenty-twenty-six?
If Jen and I are both gone by twenty-twenty-six, the new person's gonna have a heck of a time.
That's not happening, by the way, so.
Yeah.
That's not your, that's not your decision.
That is absolutely not happening.
We just want to give a good time for both here. I was here since the last audit and Jen has really has built deep into it. We know we have some, a tough job to do. The last conversion that they did in twenty-fifteen eliminated a lot of our DCL and GL. So we're gonna have to think of new ways, a string of ways to come up with supporting that for what we're gonna need in the audit. And I guess just having both of us here is gonna be really important.
Okay.
Mr. President, another question.
One, sir.
Would we have to do another audit after this one is completed at all? Because I know that you said that it needs to be completed.
Yeah, so there's usually three audits, there's the twenty-first, and then after all your expenditures are done, and then the final audit. So there's usually three audits, and throwing one more in here. And the reason is because of the extension of the TIF One audit, it really needs to be done. I think it would be a good piece of mind for the community also to know that auditors have looked through our audit and we have complied with the project, TIF project plan, because that's one of the things they look at. And I think it's just a great time for it.
Trustee Emily?
Okay, she pretty much answered what I was gonna comment on because of the extension. That means now the information you're gonna have to try and keep track of is stretched out also and we need to know that we're doing it correctly.
If we would have gotten the extension of the audit in twenty-twenty-one, we'd have the extension.
Okay, any more on the discussion? We have a motion and a second. No more discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, one no by trustee Zhong. So carried. Number ten. Oh, that's, sorry.
That's right.
And I'll, we'll do it.
Review and possible action of the twenty-twenty-twenty-one CIT snowbox purchase.
Yeah, one question.
Sure, I guess, so part of the twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one CIT included the purchase of two snowboxes that can be used on our swamp loader trucks. So it's the trucks that have the interchangeable bed. So in the wintertime, we usually have to take our other Quonex dump trucks, put, you know, a bunch of plywood and boards on them, take the gates off, make them so that we can haul snow. It becomes a laser, a labor-intensive effort, putting on and removing the board materials when we have to go to cul-de-sacs if we're loading snow out. Then you take the boards off on one side, you blow snow, you put them back on. Past year, we've also ended up hiring a lot of the other contractors to help us with hauling snow just because we don't have enough trucks. Both of the trucks that these snowboxes would go on would be trucks that fall snow during a normal snow event. Then when they're done pulling snow, we can unhook the salter, sanding unit, and put the snowbox on it and deal the haul snow in a matter of minutes with those trucks. So we did ask three, I guess, dealers in central Wisconsin for quotes. We got two back, both are, I guess, Weston Companies and Scotts Heavy Truck and Truck Equipment. So we'd be, I guess, looking to move forward with having a Scotts Heavy Truck, build us the two snowboxes to use on the swamp loader trucks.
And, and that's for both of them, right?
Yeah, so that's for two boxes.
Okay.
Where's the extra four thousand nine hundred and fifty coming from out of budget?
So during the CIT process, what we're gonna do is we're gonna continue to monitor the actual versus budgeted as we continue with the purchase things that are on our CIT plan. And when it comes down to the end, if we are out of budgeted funds, we need to select what projects we're gonna be doing or not doing at the end, or what equipment we're gonna be buying and that line.
That's a good question, I was gonna dovetail on that. So we've had other ones that are less.
Correct.
And I, I don't know exactly where we are right now, but I'm sure we're much less than four thousand?
Yeah, even our equipment sales this year were, I'd say it was about thirty thousand more in equipment sales than we anticipated.
Okay, good, I just, that was the same question I had.
Yeah, because I was wondering, you know, if things go over.
Yes.
The, the other question I have is, can you walk me through the process of how you originally budgeted for forty-one thousand eight hundred and it comes up, and the actual now is obviously four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars more? I believe, if I recall correct, one of our other projects as well, we budgeted for, but it was also, it came back in for expenses, it was more expensive than we originally budgeted for. So I'm walking through this process here so that we don't have to go through this again here because I, I'm kind of nervous about us, I'm kind of nervous about this happening multiple times in the future here as well too.
But we approved it last year.
We approved it last year. The other thing I can tell you, whatever you budget, when you're talking about equipment, will never be what it actually is. Because you have no control over that. You go out and you ask them and you say, how much will it cost me for a truck? Or how much for a box, or how much whatever else?
So then how can we, how can we budget a little bit, I mean, still four thousand over? And you know, how, is there, is there a mechanism or something that we can do that have in place that would budget as closely as possible or, you know, closely as possible? Because this is the, I'll be very honest, this is the only entity that I've been on that actually had this much, this problem. You know, I've been on the county board, I've been on the school board and we were budgeting fairly close. And if it was over, it's several hundreds or even a thousand dollars over. But, you know, and, and, and don't get me wrong here, I'm, I'm gonna be supporting this because we did have a good sale, you know, and we had money to cover this. But it's, if, if we keep down this road, going down this road here, I'm concerned that soon we're gonna see five thousand, ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars on, you know, we're over budget here. And when do we stop? When, that's the question here.
Well, you stop when you decide that you don't want to have, purchase that because it's more than, more than what you feel that you can have in your budget or you don't have anything else to, to deal with it. I can tell you from experience, because I was, worked for a truck equipment company for a number of years. for a number of years, they don't necessarily have the control of it. The guy from Freightliner or whomever you're turning around and buying from, they have a price increase and they may say four percent yesterday, and they have no idea about that when they're going on. So they give you the best price that they can give you when we're budgeting, they just do not have the control of what it is. In the case of this materials or whatever else, today, all the materials to build everything are anywhere between ten and fifteen percent more than what they were eight months ago.
Sure, so I guess going back to my question to Director Wodolski here, walk me through the process, how you, how you came up with the forty-one thousand eight hundred and, forty-one thousand eight hundred?
Yeah, so the forty-one thousand eight hundred number came from talking with the truck builders and saying, we're looking at doing, getting a bed made that fits the hooklet system, this type of steel, we'd like it to hinge this way so we can pull down a side, you kind of give them the parameters and, you know, they're not gonna give you a hard number, I guess, and commit to it until you say, I want your final quote. So when we're looking for a budget number, we say, can you give us a budget number? I guess, to your point, in, I pulled up the twenty nineteen purchases. In twenty nineteen, we had a plow truck for two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in the budget, we bought a plow truck for two hundred and four thousand dollars. We had an excavator at a hundred and ninety thousand, we bought an excavator for a hundred and eighty-one thousand. You know, the same year, though, we had, you know, other things that, you know, an asphalt patcher for thirty-five thousand, it came in at forty-one thousand. So I guess when we talk about these things, we try to get a good budget number, but there's always a little bit of fluctuation, and, you know, for the most part, it does end up as a wash, you know, they even out over the years, but, you know, to, I think it was Bob's point, if we end up getting numbers back and they're too high, you say, okay, wait, we need to hold off, we're not gonna buy this right now. You know, I, I know sometimes, I think it's the county, they usually bid a lot more pieces of equipment at one time than we do, and they might get a little better feel from somebody giving them that budget number. So I guess I don't have a great explanation, but I think overall, we do a pretty good job of keeping it within, you know, certain, you know, tolerances of, within budget, so.
Trustee Zhong, I think that this is the first time, at least since I've been Chair of Public Works, that I've seen anything from Director Wodolski's come over budget. It's usually quite good, this is just an outlier.
So, like I just said, I, I have nothing against it, you know, the only reason why I'll vote for this is because obviously the Department of Public Works does a phenomenal job at taking care of the items and selling it, and we're getting, you know, funding from that, and that's basically really gonna cover this portion here, so I'll be supporting, for supporting this, specifically this motion here, for those reasons.
Any else? Finance, could we have a motion to recommend to the board?
I move that we recommend the purchase of the box, snowboxes from Scott's Heavy Truck.
Motion by Bender, second by Simmons. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Same motion for Board of Trustees, need a motion for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one approved CIP snowbox purchase.
I'll move that we purchase the snowboxes for the specific, for the specified amount.
Motion by Feeney. Second by Ziegler. On the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried.
Okay, the resolutions and ordinances, we have none. I'd like to motion to adjourn the Finance Committee meeting. Next meeting will be October nineteenth at four-thirty, it'll be another joint meeting, and that'll follow the tourism commission, and any items you would like for future meetings? Okay, remarks from staff?
I just want to mention that for the rest of recovery, the state just came with a clarification regarding public safety, so, I'm gonna be working with Nick over at the EMPD, the new rule basically allows for a lot of possibility of claiming the toll officer companies to get that. Now, what we do is, when they must be claiming it, then we hand it over to the administration. It'll be a great benefit for them, and that way we can make sure that we use the funds that we're giving to us instead of letting them go over.
Okay. Committee members, any comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
If I could, I guess, I just want to thank all the department members for giving the budget information to Jessica and Jen, and I guess especially thank Jessica and Jessica for their work and putting the budget together, they do a phenomenal job, I think everybody recognizes that, but it's always, it's a lot easier for us to work when we can get information on the budget, and thank you for that.
Yes, the budget goes much better.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
We're just waiting on the public safety for Tuesday's meeting. They have their budget meeting Tuesday.
I always mentioned I was a pro-lineman meeting, yeah.
Tomorrow night at five. At five, yeah.
But I think it's gonna be adaptive, I mean, but.
Okay, there's no other comments or business, the motion to adjourn?
I saw move.
Motion by Bender? Or was that second by Simmons? On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at whatever time it is, my computer.
Twenty twenty-seven. Is tourism at four-thirty, right?
No.
Next time? Okay, so then Finance starts and then, okay, got it.
Yes.
Anybody have to take a break? And Finance is done, so we're gonna move ahead with BOT. What's the color of your inside of your mask, Keith? Well, I don't know, because I always, every time I go into the store, I ask my wife, what color is supposed to show? And, and so, she always says the blue, and I look around, I see all blue.
It's white on both sides.
Oh, it is? Okay, well, then I stand corrected.
Depends on the manufacturer.
I stand corrected, right.
That's a little gross.
Well, I always, once I wear it, then I'm wearing it the same way every time. All right, Village Board, okay, we're still in, that's right. All right, unfinished business, number sixteen.
Okay, just like you, I hope you want to switch, I don't know if you're gonna run up, you're gonna do it, I can take the minutes from here or?
Okay, I have a little bit of something, it's a little bit good.
So we're, we're good to go, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna switch the minutes for the.
And Keith, just so you know, you, just so you know, you have no speaker. So just, just speak up a little bit. Yeah, okay, all right. Lauren, you can still hear us?
Yes, I can, it's a little muffled at times, but.
All right, all right. Keith has his mask on backwards, so, all right. Village Board, unfinished business, number sixteen, we're looking for nominations for Vice President.
I'll nominate Trustee Feeney for Vice President.
Okay.
I'd make a motion for Ziegler as Vice President.
Lauren, can you hear us?
Yes, did the trustee Ziegler get nominated?
Yes, I just said that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more motions? So right now, we have Trustee Feeney and Trustee Ziegler. Hearing none, we need a roll call vote to, I think we'll do it the same way again, okay?
Okay, Carmeline? Oh, okay, Ziegler. Okay, Feeney?
Feeney?
Maloney?
Ziegler?
Mynell?
Ziegler.
White?
Uber.
What was that?
Lauren?
Yes?
Yeah, it's up, you're, you're supposed to say a name.
Ziegler.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
He was muffled this time.
Yeah, I know, Zhong?
Feeney.
And Ziegler?
Ziegler.
We have a five to two decision for trustee John Ziegler as Vice President. Number seventeen, ad hoc building committee. A, resolution two thousand, two zero two zero dash zero one two to create a committee. Okay, you're on the speaker?
I think so.
Yep, you've all seen, I think you've all seen some of the names that were put forward. Yeah, some of them, you wanna, I have one more to add tonight?
So first.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The first item then, I, you had talked at the last meeting about creating a committee, and I guess just in terms of process, as I, I attached the municipal call relative to committees, and, you know, creating the committee can be done by some actions of the board, so I thought maybe you'd want to officially do that with this, based on this resolution, I'm not saying if you, you know, if you want to make some tweaks to what's in here, you can certainly do that as part of adopting, if that's what you wish to do. I guess, tried to put out what we, my perception, I guess, of what you want the committee to accomplish, because it would be a temporary committee, to add a committee for one purpose here, and that would be then to kind of review the history of the project, review the condition of existing facilities, give some input on the building design, provide some input on public relations, materials, and assist staff with some of the public outreach, and then, I guess, we'd want to have some kind of a timeline, a timeframe by which they'd make a recommendation of the board. I guess with bidding season being prime and the early part of the winter, shortly after the first of the year, I put in here November thirtieth as coming back with a recommendation of the board, if you think that's too soon, you know, that gets, that's something you could, could change. The other discussion we had last time was a membership of, I think a number of between eight and ten. The typical makeup of a committee, I think, is five, although I think in this case, you, there was a discussion I have and a couple of other trustees, and then the normal committee protocol is that the village president administrator serve as ex officium. So, if that makeup, I guess, is what, that number, I guess, is what you might be looking for, if you want to have more on the, on the committee, I guess, I'd recommend that the, you know, some modifications made to the, to the resolution before it's adopted or as part of the adoption, if that's what you wish to do, and then also maybe you address that deadline or that timeframe for reporting back to the committee is what you want.
What was that date again?
End of November.
Oh, okay. Oh, I like that, okay. Somebody else?
I just want a clarification, but I think before I asked for the clarification, we would have to motion for this to be on the table and second in the, during discussions and make amendments if needed, is that, am I understanding the process correct?
Yes.
Okay.
You need to have a motion to approve the resolution before you can discuss.
Okay, good.
Okay, so looking for a mo.
I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve the resolution.
Motion by Zhong, second by Ermling, on the discussion?
Yes, so just, I just want to get a clarification on this, so it says that the building committee shall be comprised of five individuals who are residents of the village plus two village trustees, from my reading there, that's seven members, am I reading that correct?
Right.
Okay.
I, I think, but then clause A, two more would be nine, I, I kind of, I guess I, when we've been talking about this, I've been saying anywhere from eight to twelve, is what I was thinking, so, and I don't know if that, if we can, if that's a can do or cannot, but.
I think for a.
I, I think it's gotta be manageable, I think more than twelve is probably not manageable.
Correct.
And I, I think that eight to twelve is a sweet spot, and so if we can kind of get in the middle there, I think that would be perfect, yeah?
I would be fine with nine members, you know, just so that, that way it's an odd number, obviously, and it's kind of in the middle, I would be all right with that as well.
Okay, so right now, though, we're not gonna clarify a, a number because we don't know for sure who's, I know you got some applications, I just got another one tonight, just now, so I don't know where that would put us.
Yeah, I had a couple others too as well, so.
So if, if we can say eight to twelve, and I, I think that, I think you're right on a nine or eleven for kind of a sweet spot, it's only advisory, so, okay, all right. So on the discussion, any more on the discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead, Lauren. Go ahead, Lauren.
Compensation for these people per diem?
The proposal, it's in the ad, would be forty dollars per meeting, similar to what we have on other committees.
Forty dollars a meeting, just like other committees.
Okay, that's the question I had, thank you very much.
All right.
Now, I, I have another question as well, too, so on other boards that I serve on, when it says that a, you know, a member is an ex official member, they're allowed to vote as well, all right, we're referring to this one, is the president and the administrator allowed to vote as well, just so for clarification?
I'll be able to vote as a board, so it really doesn't matter, I, I think we're looking to build consensus, I, I don't know, the vote is only advisory, so, I, I don't know how much.
I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, it's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation, really, so we could have a recommendation of seven and two, saying that this is what they believe, I mean, we probably want to hear what they all, you know, is it unanimous? Is it, is it six to three? Is it seven to two? I think that's a good point, yeah.
I, I just wanted to be clear on there, so that that way there's no confusion, but I definitely agree, I'm pretty sure that the committee, the committee is gonna be fairly, you know, you, you know, united during the whole discussion, but just wanted to be clear.
I'd, I'd have no problem not voting, not taking my vote, and I'm, I'm sure Keith would probably feel the same.
I think that's, that's actually the way it's, it's, it's written in the other part of the, the other parts for the committees, the committee responsibilities is that.
Yeah.
The president.
We get to vote on it, you know, I get to vote on it with you, so.
Okay, just, I just wanted to be clarified.
Okay.
So, so you're not gonna allow them to vote, or you?
They wouldn't vote on that, during that discussion, but they would vote at the village board.
I can vote as a trustee member.
Right.
But, you know, I mean, I'll definitely have my voice heard.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'd like to see, I would like both of you guys to vote in committee, voting in committee, so that your opinion is known.
There's normally, well.
I think there'll be opinions.
Haven't been voting members of our committee.
Right, there'll be opinions, and we can certainly have a sub-opinion to what the committee thinks.
And then when you bring it back, say, if you, if you don't agree with it, you can, you can say, this is why, this is what the recommendation is, but.
I think that's, and, and I, I think through this whole process, I think we'll be giving updates to the board also, so. I, I think we just need to be extremely transparent, I mean, very above board, everybody has to talk about it, we want to be able to talk about it to anybody that asks us questions or anywhere we are in, in this community.
So, I'll, I'll also make an amendment to change the, the building, the section where it says the building shall, the building committee shall be comprised of five individuals, I'll change it from five to eight to twelve individuals.
Okay, yeah, we, we might not have.
Are you amending that motion?
Yes.
Okay, you hear that, Lauren?
No, I did, uh.
Yes, he is, yes, he is amending that.
Okay, if he's amending the motion, then he needs a second on the amendment.
Oh, second. All right, we have a first and a second. Any more on that discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Oh, you gotta, you gotta have a vote to approve the amended.
Yep, I'm, I'm doing amendment, I'm sorry. All those in favor on that amendment?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So carried. Now, back on the original amendment, any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So carried, thank you, Lauren. Now, under selection, are, are we actually gonna finalize it tonight?
Uh, that's up to you.
Okay, well, I, I don't think we have to tonight, I, I think we're gonna, but I've got one here from a Matt, or excuse me, a Mike Thies, and he is an architect with Jagorzi Group, and obviously not gonna bid on this or be part of this, but he is on the commercial side of all Jagorzi stuff, so he's not on anything residential, but he lives in the, in addition, north. Wayland, yes, back in the new addition back in there is where he has a home, so he is a Weston resident, but he would like to serve on that also. I think we have Duane Gao, I think we have.
I provided you the, people that had submitted through our.
Okay.
Website.
It's on your left, right?
What was it, another name?
Could have bit me.
So.
Wow, just look at the paper mark, just look at the paper.
Well, so, I think the first name you had there is Aaron Nelson.
Aaron Nelson, yep.
Who was associated with the B C M S School of History.
Yes, oh, good.
He was, he was the. He was, he was the, uh, I think with the buildings and grounds operation at one time, but.
Yi, did you bring us this one?
Um, no, I didn't, but I'm sure Chris heard it somehow.
Okay.
Aaron's phenomenal with finances, so I would be very supportive.
Very good. Yi, oh, you know him too, that's, oh, sorry, your wife was here, yeah. All right, so we have Aaron Nelson, we have Hushain Zagami, which we all know. Uh, okay, these are all the ones that, uh, we have a Brian Bushnell. And does, uh, are we there? Okay. And we have a Dwayne Gao. And we have a Brian Ermling. I think that's a good, good group here, one, two. Is that five right here in these papers? So we have five.
Four plus the name you mentioned, Adam, so that's five.
I counted five here.
There's five here.
So Adam, you mean Mike Thies?
Yeah, I counted Aaron.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, yeah, I did count five.
Mike Thies would be six.
My mistake, yes, so Adam would be six.
Um, on, on the building side, I'm thinking, uh, as a trustee, I'm thinking, uh, Steve Minell. I'm also thinking, uh, Lauren White. If anybody has any rhyme or reason there, these are two guys that have some free time. Well, I don't, who has free time today? So now we're, we're at six, we're at seven, eight. Do we have, I, I did not reach out to Mort McVane.
Did you wanna reach out to Mort McVane?
Well, he had called me, uh, probably five, six, seven months ago. And said if we form one, he would like to serve, so I, I certainly could.
I spoke to Gary Gert today.
Okay, Gary Gert.
I didn't get a, a fa-, a positive response. He was distracted on some other things today, so.
Yeah. Yeah, Gary may not show for the planning committee, he's, uh, up at the hospital being tested with his daughter right now. So, um, he's got a, a very, very horse and a cold, so he just, uh, on the precautionary side. But, um, you, you know, the thought there is, is a possible, you know, I wanna bring this up, conflict. But yet he's right smack in the middle of a two-story build right now. Uh, he's very fresh in all this, so, uh, if certain things did come up, he'd have to obviously recuse himself. But, um, I think that'd be a fresh look at too, so, but he said he wasn't sure, too?
He didn't give me a reply, uh, today necessarily, so I guess that's another thing that.
This Mike Thies is actually through him. So that's how I got that name.
Oh, really?
So I wonder if he's kinda putting someone else there.
Okay.
Some that, like, would be a good candidate there.
Yeah, I think so too, you know, so.
What about Joe Jordan?
Uh, oh, Joe Jordan, yeah, he'd be a good one, except, you know, there, again, he'd have to recuse himself. I think Joe Jordan would be exceptional, very, very good, I, if you all agree, but, uh, he is, uh, very, uh, level, very, uh, um, calm, unlike me, so.
So if you have Joel added to all these names that, it's a ten.
A ten? And you and I are, are eleven and twelve?
Right.
Okay.
But you're non-voters.
Right, right. We'll, we'll be opinions, but yeah.
I have eleven.
You have eleven? Oh, with, with Keith and I?
No.
Oh.
I have that Mike Thies, Dwayne Gao, Aaron Nelson, Hushain, Brian Bushnell, Ryan Ermling, and then Steve Minell, Lauren, Gary Gert.
No, not Gary, but Joe, so that's nine. If Gary pulls off and he intended to have Mike Thies in, then that would be nine with Joe Jordan.
Do, is that including Mort as well too?
No.
I just like Gary's. I included Mort, so that's why I came with him.
Yeah.
Okay, not Mort.
I think Gary's history would be good too, yeah. Well, if we even buff it up a little bit and him and I are over the twelve, so be it.
Well, I, I think just having Mort as well, that would be phenomenal as well.
I'll buzz him tonight, okay? If I can't get a hold of him, you know him too, right?
Yes, he lives two houses down from me.
Oh, perfect, okay. If I can't get a hold of him tonight, I'm gonna text you.
Okay, let me know.
And if you wanna take a walk over there or something, okay, all right.
And there will be staff involved in this, providing information and, um, consultants as well.
I think this is pretty manageable, yeah. I feel confident.
Some really good people.
Yeah, I think so too. I like the school addition a lot, I, cause you, you had brought it up and I, I like that.
Do we include these numbers in the minutes then?
Yes.
You guys all brought it up?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll go to work and, and flush them in here. Is, Barb, any thoughts?
No.
Yi?
Only, the only thing I would recommend is, um, once we have the committee, uh, established, let's be transparent and publish, uh, publish out the committees, um, I don't want us to be hitting somewhere where they're thinking that there's a secret committee going out there, so.
That's a great idea, that's a great idea, wouldn't have it any other way. Steve?
No, that's fine, it's just, I was wondering, I know, I think you get done calls from Jackie Bender at one point too.
Yep, Jackie Bender, um, I, I talked to her a little bit about this out on, uh, the street there. Uh, I did bring up the building committee, I don't know if she wants to commit the time to it, but she wants to be appraised to it, appraised of it. So I am gonna, just so you know, and I'll, I'll be, uh, transparent about it, I'm gonna be calling her regularly, letting her know where this committee is. And I think you know her too, so if you have any talk with her, so unless you've heard something different.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, I, I mean, I, I, I know her just from more years, I mean, um, but that's it.
I, I personally talked, had quite a long conversation with her, uh, at a retailer's and, and I've talked to her several times. And, and now, uh, she's very thankful, by the way, on that turf going in, on Schofield Avenue. She thinks that was really nice, uh, she thinks it all, it should all be turf. But I, I think the concrete and the turf is a nice test for several years, I think that's a great idea. I've had several calls in that already, so. Um, am I true to say that it's gonna be that, uh, orange burnt clay reddish color?
Yes.
Like out in, out in the Wittenberg?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We're going in probably tomorrow or maybe.
Okay, I, I didn't mean to switch gears here. So we're gonna, we're gonna have those names and, uh, we're gonna be, we're gonna publish that, I think that's a great idea.
Are we gonna let them know?
I'm, I'm, yep, let them all know, notify them all and let, uh, I'll call Mort, okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Lauren?
I, I think this, the Board of Trustees has to take formal action on appointing to this board.
Yes, we will, yep. So with, with that, I just kinda wanted to get a little, little round, uh, take there. Uh, so I'm looking for approval on the, the selection of members.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermling?
Uh, second.
Second by Zong, on the question.
Do you wanna just re- review the names again?
Sure. We've got, um, Mike Thies, uh, and that spelling is?
T-H-E-I-S-S.
T-H-E-I-S-S, correct. Uh, we have, um, Adam Mel-, Aaron Nelson, A-A-R-O-N Nelson. We have Hushain Zagami. We have Brian Bushnell. We have Dwayne Gao. We have Brian Ermling. Uh, possible Mort McVane. Uh, Joe Jordan, and who's making that call? I, I'll, I'll make that call. And did I miss one more?
Yeah, two trustees.
And, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Lauren White, Lauren White and Steve Minell. And then ex officio Keith Donner and myself. So there's the clarification, Lauren?
Yes, thank you.
All right, and any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppo-, opposed, so carried. Uh, number eighteen, motion to rescind action taken by the village board at its June first, two thousand and twenty meeting of the board as follows. Motion by Maloney, second by Feeny to terminate the agreement with Safer.
Um, I guess I would make the motion to rescind action taken by the board on June first, two thousand and twenty meeting, um, which would terminate the agreement with Safer.
Uh, which would put us back in with Safer, right, which would?
I was making the motion to rescind that motion.
Right, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Uh, we have a motion by Ermling, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Ziegler, on the discussion?
As, as I mentioned, no, sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize, but as I mentioned at my, at the last meeting here, I'm still, I, I'm fa-, in favor of rescinding that mo-, uh, that, uh, motion. As long as we have some sort of report on changes that's been conducted at the, at that, you know, that's me, addressing our concerns that we voiced that, our, our, voiced as to our reasons why we were, we pulled out of that, uh, agreement here. But I haven't heard anything specifically yet and I wanna hear that prior to going on, if you, prior to, uh, obviously rescinding, rescinding. Uh, as I mentioned, if they're all addressed and, um, we can get a presentation or even just those concerns addressed, I would be in favor of rescinding it. But, um, right now I haven't heard anything, so I guess I'll, um, yield the floor back to the president and, um, we will go from there.
I do have some comments, but Steve, you want me to go first or you?
No, go, go ahead, I, I was, I, he's echoing.
My, my termination process for me, um, uh, I don't know, it may differ with, uh, trustee Feeny. But, um, I, I, I wanted, um, uh, I, I don't wanna say this the wrong way. I, I wanted to make sure they understood that we felt there should be some changes. So, and to, for lack of a different word, uh, maybe to get attention, I don't know. But my intention was not always to terminate. I felt we had a lot of time with eighteen months, it, it was actually designed not to break and designed with time to fix. And, uh, through this process, I believe we have done some fixing. As a board, um, you know, the, the budget is, I mean, came in at a four point five this year. The board has, has always maintained that they would talk and would wanna merge with other entities. But I specifically brought up Riverside at our last board and, and everybody unanimously said yes, that we will start those talks. I have already, um, made some comments to Administrator Olson and to George already. I mean, over the last month or two, um, that, that's, um, a direction we would wanna go as the southern community down here, okay? Other, other ones were, um, I believe, and I brought this up at the Safer board the last time, is that I believe, uh, the strongest contract should have representation. And, uh, Keith Langahan has been on that board, uh, from the, the beginning, uh, representing Marathon as a member at large. And right now in our, uh, in our, um, bylaws, it's, uh, two from Weston and two from Red Mountain. Um, and then Keith has served as that fifth person. Uh, I, as a fifth director, I believe that the fifth director should be from the strongest contract. And, uh, not to, um, have Keith off, but I believe it should be Cronawetter. Cronawetter has got a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in the game. And, I mean, it's, 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 there's not, nothing even close. Now, if we wanna change our charter and have the top three contracts have representation, ownership would still be with the four votes, but then our three largest contracts. Now, whoever those contracts are, that would change year by year. So right now currently, it's, um, it would be Cronawetter. Um, I believe the second strongest contract is Marathon and the third is, uh, the town of Weston. And I would have no issue voting with that, uh, we talked about that also. So that's something that we're still gonna talk about. We're also doing a three sixty on the management, uh, that has not, uh, finished yet, but we'll have results in that in about a month, month and a half. And, um, on, on a good faith measure, at the last, uh, meeting, uh, Red Mountain unanimously, along with the Weston and, uh, chairman, uh, uh, I'm, excuse me, not chairman, but, uh, um, Marathon, Keith Langahan, all five had voted for the RFP for Weston and Red Mountain to do the finance, to do the accounting. Uh, so that's some software that has to get purchased, that has to be some other things that have to get done. But, uh, we're gonna move forward and have that done for next year. That had a, that had to get done to move forward, save some money. I think we're paying thirty-two thousand right now, I think we'll have sixteen plus some fees with labor, some shifting around. But I believe the management of, uh, of Safer is gonna get a much better understanding and get trained better on how to do budgeting and learn from these two entities, uh, much more. It'll be much more communication amongst the two entities that own the Safer right now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Lauren.
After all these meetings, I've heard discussions about issues and problems and I have not heard specifically what those issues are, written, date, time, specifically, so that you and I can take this as order director members to the board. It's pretty hard to hit a target when you don't know what the target is. Uh, some of these issues, um, trustee Feeny brought up about personnel issues, some of these issues, comments that he is receiving from people inside Safer, it's all hearsay. Unless someone's willing to give names, dates, what they saw, what they heard, it's all hearsay. And if that's the case, they need to go to the fire commission for these complaints. And not talk about it in the community. First off, these should be, all these meetings should be in closed session. That's just my comment, thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. So that's about it in a nutshell for me. Um, I, I know Nate had some, um, some other issues, um, um, I, I'll tell you right now, I'll take this all on me, shame on me. If, uh, if I was boisterous, and I was, I was loud, and, uh, I was upset, I was concerned. And, um, you know, the village of Weston is paying two-thirds of this and Red Mountain is paying a third. And, uh, I just felt it was not a true partnership. In the last several months, I, I, and I know I had a conversation with Nate a, a week ago, I, I feel more of a partnership, I really do. And, uh, uh, Lauren being involved, Lauren was one of the, the first, um, people on, on board, helped set it all up. Um, he's brought some, uh, retro, you know, some, some history to everything and for me. And, uh, I feel better. We're also meeting every other meeting, Weston and Red Mountain. Prior to that, it was always Red Mountain. And I, I think there's a lot to say about that, that they're traveling over here to meet every other time, we're traveling over there. And, and that's how a partnership should work, we need to listen to each other. I need to listen more and I, you know, Lauren had a comment with trustee Feeny. I had some things that I had not shared, that I had not talked to the board about either, that I heard, um, you know, on the street. And, um, and I started working those things out, we did have a, a one or two closed sessions. And, um, I believe, uh, the right path is to stay with Safer and to pursue Riverside, to, not pursue Riverside, but to merge. I, I seriously don't, it doesn't even bother me what the name is. I, we can't get hung up on what we named, uh, a, a lifesaving entity, so. Um, but hopefully in a couple of years, we're closer on that deal too. So that's what I have to say to, to help anybody with some questions. I don't have things on paper, uh, these were things that were very fluid and happening, uh, month by month, day by day, so.
Well, I just say that the, the fact that you're having, uh, working with Red Mountain and the village on the finances, to me, is, is the, uh, changed the game completely because.
You know, and, and I'm glad you said that, you know, because I, I, I had some issues, Barb, with your, your, your feelings and then your non-vote, and yet I understand now more on what you were doing because you, you didn't wanna lose that, um, uh, paramedic service and the different things, and you were truly pushing to fix. And I think Lauren's thoughts on holding off too was to fix, cause I think it was a five to two vote, right? I think you voted in the majority of five, yes. So it was a five to two. I, I was very loud and I, trustee Sparks was also very loud. And, um, uh, but my intentions were to fix.
Well, that's.
And, and Steve is brand new, you know, so.
I, I just wanna make a comment before I have to go here, but, um, the reason why I brought that up is because it sounded at our discussion there that there was a lot of concerns that needed to be addressed here. So from my, what I'm hearing from you, President Maloney, is that you feel that those concerns that were brought up during the discussion there has been addressed and am I understanding that correct?
Yes, I do. I, I will be voting to rescind and to, uh, uh, stop the termination process and to stay with Safer and to, and to keep moving forward, yes, that's where my vote will be.
I'm, I am still opposed to rescinding it at this time. I want to see the votes or to actually have the up and down vote for the four constituent members and the three largest contracts. And then I want to hear, uh, the results of the first meeting between Safer Board and Riverside Board or, uh, or what they say separately. Uh, and then, once those two things are met, then I'll vote to come back in. Because even though it's been a very good four months, four months does not undo several years. So that's where my marker is.
Okay.
Right now, today, I'm opposed.
Okay, so Fred, Fred Schaefer, who is the new member on the, the board, uh, was there in the beginning, just like Lauren, had the same exact view over several months, because I kept saying, let's, let's, let's throw some olive branches across. Let's, let's talk about this, and he kept saying, no, I am not gonna vote, hey, Dwayne, I'm not gonna vote, you know, in favor of this accounting until you rescind that termination.
I could see that.
And, well, we had, we, it was an open dialogue, you can read the minutes. And I said, you know, it's gotta start somewhere. And, and I had a, a talk with, uh, Fred prior to the meeting and I said, it's gotta start. And tonight's the night it's gotta start and, and we, we gotta quit putting these walls up. And I did, I had a wall up, and I didn't wanna work to them until they did something. Well, they didn't wanna work with us until we did something. And so hearing that, you're, that's exactly the same conversation I had with Fred. And we gotta, we gotta tear these wall down, tear these walls down and work together. So, they already, they already came over and said, we're, we're gonna, we, we have faith in this, we have trust in this, and we're gonna work with the Village of Weston and we're gonna do this accounting, we're gonna go ahead and do that. And, uh, and they're obviously hoping and in very much in favor of our board passing this to rescind our termination, so. That's all I have. Any more in the discussion?
I, I guess, um, you know, you know, uh, the, um, the, the other question I would have is, would it hurt for us to, um, table this to the next meeting, ask for, um, the, the, uh, Fire Chief to come in as well and also give some of the, you know, an update on some of the changes that they made internally as well too, um, cause I mean, we, uh, the, it's the, cause I wanna make a, a good decision as well, because I don't want us to just rescind, uh, to, to pull out of contract just because we want to make, you know, make some noises. If there's some concerns that needed to be addressed here, I want us to address those concerns and see what else has been done and, you know, I, I think Trustee White is right, you know, before there was a lot of discussions about there being some concerns, but we, we haven't really heard anything specifically either, and the reason why I voted to withdraw out of this kind of, this, uh, uh, this contract was because I heard that there was a lot of concerns, there was a lot of, um, you know, things that needed to be changed, and I wanna hear what's being changed, you know, what's been changed. Uh, you mentioned a lot at the policy level, but what about internally and, you know, in the, uh, you know, in the sta- in the management level?
Yep.
I, I also, uh, I guess my bigger question is, it seems to me like there's this big rush to jump back in, and to me, I'm wondering, or I, I guess my question is, is there a rush to get back in? Uh, and, uh, I think, uh, Trustee or President Maloney, you and I both want, uh, a strong showing to, uh, to Red Mountain, uh, preferably unanimous, that, that the Village of Weston is in this, and I don't, um, I guess, just based on what I'd like to see, the vote and, uh, the vote on realigning, uh, the, the board of Safer, and then also the discussion about, or the discussion between boards or, um, or, uh, at least the beginning of negotiations to enter in. I mean, that's, that's my marker, that's all I'm asking for.
I, I am not, um, gonna be, I'm not gonna be part of the majority or minority of, of being the heavy hand.
Okay.
I, I won't be that person. Uh, I won't be part of that. Um, I also, when you say that, is there a sense of urgency, I say, yes, there is. Uh, the Village of Cronenwetter just voted a one-year extension to Safer. We all thought it was gonna go to, to, um, to Riverside, and I, I was absolutely shocked that they stayed with this, and we believe we have a nine-month window, and after that nine, and that, that window started a month ago. After nine months, if they don't see cooperation and partnership, they will be going Riverside for a three-year contract, okay? That, that is going to happen, and they almost did it this time without twenty-four seven paramedic services. They would've taken, uh, a substandard service, just, just because they felt that Safer wasn't a partnership. Um, there is a sense of urgency to show that partnership, to show the unity, to show that, that we're working together now. Um, we can fill some of these gaps in for some of these questions, but I, I'm in the middle of this, I'm in the middle of it, thick and thin, and I am confident that going back in with Safer and rescinding this is the right thing to do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Lauren?
The other side of the issue, if we are going to terminate, we need to start the budgeting process six months ago on this because we gotta come up with money to run our own department or we're gonna pay somebody to run, to provide a service.
Correct.
It costs us another money either way.
Correct.
And we haven't budgeted for it.
Thank you.
Other question?
Yep.
He called a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you had a question.
Nope.
Uh, called, the question has been called, and I, I would, um.
He needs a second, doesn't he?
We, we have a motion and a second.
We, we have a motion and a second up.
When they call, when they call the question, it needs a second, oh, it would, yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't need a second?
I don't think so.
Doesn't need a second.
Yeah, no, it's a privilege motion.
When you call for the question, you need a second and a vote on call for the question.
Oh, that's, that's all.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second it.
Second on the call, um, on a vote for a call and a question, um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Alright, uh, you wanna do this, um, roll call vote or just a ayes and nays?
Ayes and nays.
Okay, um, hearing no more discussion, all those in favor of rescinding, I'm, I need to say this right, the action of the termination on June first, two thousand and twenty, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? So carried, six to one.
Can I, yeah, can I just ask for, request us for the chief to come and do a piece of opinion?
Absolutely, absolutely, I will have that done.
Okay.
I will have him bring a report here, and as we keep going, we will keep on, uh, moving forward and, uh, answering any questions that anybody on the village has, okay? Uh, let's see, um, number nineteen, handbook for elected and appointed officials.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Lauren?
I know in last meeting, uh, Trustee Feeny, you mentioned there were two chapters of the handbook that we have been confused, and that's great. I didn't expect the entire book to be accepted, um, it's not a legal, it's just a handbook.
Right.
Whatever the trustees wanna do is approved.
Okay. Does anybody have any recommendation?
Well, I thought at this time, those two chapters probably are just a guide to, you know, if you've got some questions, you've got someplace to look. It was a simple answer. That's just my, I mean, we can look at the other ones, but I think those two are really what the thing to the board is, um, you know, that gives you some guidelines.
Um, just real quick here for, uh, just a little quick point of order, how long is this new facility update gonna take?
I don't really know how much we have to report on tonight.
Okay.
Really, the main point of business or order of business was the building committee formation. Uh, I know John Wallencamp is on the line if we wanna, if we have any questions for him.
Yeah.
I believe he's on the line.
Well, uh, Lauren, um.
Yes?
Is, does somebody, does somebody wanna take action on this handbook, or, uh, I, I'm gonna be honest with you, like I told you last time, I have not read nine and ten. Um, I, I did wanna look at it, but I, I was comfortable coming into this meeting without looking at it. Um, I, I am under the feeling that there is quite a bit of structure out there already, um, but I understand, uh, the point of view of some of the trustees and staff that there should be more order, so.
Well, I don't have a problem if you wanna take it chapter, chapter by chapter, that's fine, I mean, some of the chapters are pretty small. As you go through, if we do that, as you go, you can throw all things, you can add things, I mean, it's, it's not like it's my first board.
Right.
I'm willing to cut out a few of the limbs.
Would you be offended if we tabled this one more time and last time to the next board meeting?
Mark, you forget what I done, but I did for a living.
I know.
Very hard to defend.
Okay, alright. So, with that being said, um, can we, uh, can?
I'll make a motion to, um, yeah, postpone until the next meeting.
Okay, okay.
Had to make sure I was getting the right term here.
Second by Feeny. On the question, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Number twenty, new facility update. Keith, go.
Again, I don't know how much we really have to update on at this point, um, again, John Wallencamp has, uh, offered to be on the line here remotely, so I don't think I may have any questions for him tonight. We did review, Michael and I met with him on a conference call, uh, I think it was a week ago, just to follow up on some of the commentary after the last, uh, presentation with the, uh, with the videos and whatnot. Um, so I don't know, Michael, am I missing anything there? John, appreciate you standing online, if, if you're there. Does he wanna, does he wanna say anything?
Not a hand up.
Okay. No hand up? Alright, I think we're good unless, I guess, unless you have questions right now, we, we need to, I guess, decide when we wanna have our first meeting with the, with the building committee.
Yep, and John, can, can John attend or virtually or whatever too?
Yeah, I'm sure you will be able to attend however we need him to.
Okay, good, good.
I think it might be important to first, or s- time or so to let them meet him and talk to him.
Right. Lauren, did you have something?
Yeah, just so to know, John is online here.
Yes. Did John wanna speak or we're just gonna?
I think he's good, just to hear what's, unless, unless he really feels a need.
Alright. Um, alright, with that being said, uh, let's move into twenty-one, next meeting date, October nineteenth. Four thirty P M, it's another joint following the tourism, so, uh, tourism is usually about fifteen, twenty minutes, there might be a little bit more because of the C V B. Uh, there might be some questions there or some discussion there, so probably figure on, uh, at least ten to five, you know, so gives tourism at least twenty minutes. Uh, twenty-two remarks from staff, anything from staff? Sean? Michael? Keith?
No.
Anybody?
Um, we're just busy processing absentee ballots.
Oh, okay.
We're up to, um, over nine thousand registered voters and we're over thirty-four hundred absentee ballots sent out.
Wow, okay. And we start, uh, we're voting on the twentieth through the thirtieth?
In-person absentee starts on October twentieth, yeah.
In-person twentieth, through the thirtieth, and then after that, it's in-person at Dale's?
Yes.
And accepting, uh, okay. Uh, let's see, Village Board, um, Barb? Uh, Steve?
Nothing.
Uh, Nate?
Uh, yeah, two things. Number one, Wisconsin law does not prohibit, uh, our, our municipal clerks to start counting ballots until the day, until election day itself, so it's gonna be a long night for everybody. Uh, thank you in advance, uh, poll workers. Uh, number two, uh, Wisconsin's, uh, COVID positivity rate has, but, has been, uh, between fifteen and twenty-five percent positive, so everyone just please continue to wear masks. They suck, but COVID's worse, especially since, uh, especially since the president got it, that should highlight how important it is and I trust everyone is joining me in my prayers for the president's health.
Yep. Uh, Ziegler, John?
Oh.
Lauren?
Yeah, I wanted to thank the Finance Department, uh, in looking over the finance report, um, I was very impressed, I liked the narrative, it was much easier to read than some previous budgets. I ask your, my thanks along, Jenna, to your approval, thank you.
Hi. Ha- having been, uh, uh, re-elected a couple of years ago, I am, that is one of the, the most pleasing things about being back on the board is our, our team, so, uh, Jessica and Jenna hats off, big time, and, and tremendous communication too. Um, uh, dovetailing on, uh, Trustee Feeny, um, uh, yes, the tests are higher, but the deaths are lower, and I believe the president, he'll be, uh, back at the White House in, uh, fifteen minutes. Uh, motion to adjourn?
I'll hold seconds on.
So moved by Ermeling, second by John. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, we are adjourned at, uh, six four thirteen.